Call the meeting of the North Little Rock Planning Commission to order, please. Would you please call the roll?
Banks.
Present.
Blasco.
Here.
Chambers.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Phillips.
Pierce.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
White.
Here.
And Chairman Clifton.
Here.
Motion made and seconded.
To excuse those not present, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And I'd also like to welcome our newly elected council member from Ward Two, Ms. Nicole Hart, here with us today. Welcome to our meeting. We have nothing under administrative. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
Motion made and seconded, be approved as submitted, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We'll move right into our planning commission agenda. Item one and two about a special use and site plan review for the 1600 Gregory Street property. It's commonly known as the Slaughter House. If anyone is here to hear that application today, it has been withdrawn and it will not be heard unless they bring it back and resubmit again. Item number three on our agenda is rezon case number 2025-01, rezoned from I two to R U to allow a development of a single-family subdivision located east of Kim Drive and adjacent to the Country Club of Arkansas, phases twenty-five A and twenty-five C. Is the applicant here? Hey, you want to tell us what you'd like to do briefly? Give us your name.
Roy Andrews, Holloway Engineering.
Okay. You have been to the site plan review?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments you'd like to make on this?
No, sir.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this application? Are there any comments from any commissioners? Please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Blasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White. And Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application was approved, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next. Thank you. Subdivision, Mr. Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item four is S D 2025 dash oh-nine Cypress Bend, phase three and four, preliminary plat, located east of Kim Drive, adjacent to Country Club of Arkansas, phases twenty-five A and twenty-five C. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through ten in subsections, and Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, be approved as submitted. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Are there any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five on the agenda is rezon case 2025 dash oh-two, rezoning from R one to R four to allow construction of four duplex unit on a single lot at fifty-five twenty-four Camp Robinson Road. Is the applicant here? Give us your name, please.
Tristan Phillips, representing the owner and Richardson Engineering.
You have been to site plan review?
Yes, sir.
And you were able to meet all the suggestions from that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, has there been any comments from the public on this application?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application? Please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Blasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
No.
Foster.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application was approved, you can see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next.
I noticed Mr. Phillips has made it into the meeting, so let's please count him present.
Number six, site plan, Mr. Phillips.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chambers, I'm sorry.
Mr. Phillips is busy walking. Item six, S D 2025 dash ten McColl addition replat and site plan review at fifty-five twenty-four Camp Robinson Road. Applicant was present, agreed to items one through thirteen in subsections, and Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, it be approved as submitted. You have been to the site plan review committee. Have you looked over at the recommendations?
Yes.
Do you agree with all of those?
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you. Application was approved, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what to do next. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, you have a good day.
Item number seven, Mr. Chambers.
Item number seven is S D 2025 dash eleven, Galloway Industrial Park, Lot Two, revised site plan review at twenty-nine oh-one Harris Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through ten in subsections, and Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This application be approved as submitted, is the applicant here?
Yes, sir. Chairman Clifton, Thomas Pownell with Thomas Engineering.
Yes, sir. Would you like to make any other comments on this?
No, we agree to the conditions.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Mr. Chambers.
Item number eight is S D 2025 dash twelve, Lot One of the revised plat of Munford replat of Lot A, oh, W F T addition to the city of North Little Rock at fifty-five hundred MacArthur Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through eleven in subsections, and Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Thank you. Give us your name, please.
Brendan Foals with Crafton Toll.
Okay, would you like to make any other comments on this?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application as presented, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Subdivision, Mr. Chambers.
Item nine is S D 2025 dash fourteen, original city of Argent, lots four A, five A, six A, and six B, Lot nineteen, replat at two-ten East Broadway Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through ten in subsections, and Design Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Is the applicant present?
Thomas Pownell again, Chairman Clifton.
Would you care to make any other comments on this?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners on the application, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Application was approved. Item number ten on our agenda is conditional use case number 2025 dash zero-two, a conditional use to allow a photography studio as an allowable use in a seat-one zoning district at fifty-one oh-one North Locust Street. Is the applicant here? Yes, please come forward and give us your name, please.
Good evening, Amanda Watts.
Yes, ma'am. Would you care to make any comments on this? Okay, has there been any comments on this application from anyone?
No, sir.
Are you already in business at that location?
No, I'm not in business yet, I'm just doing some pain.
Any comments from any of the commissioners? Any comments from anyone in the audience on the application as presented, please call the roll.
Banks.
Yes.
Blasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
And Chairman Clifton.
Yes. Your application was approved, see Mr. Spencer, and he can tell you what you might do next.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. Special use case number 2024 dash twenty-one, special use to allow a pawn shop in a seat-three zoning district at twenty-three oh-one East Broadway in North Little Rock. Is the applicant here?
We need to postpone for notice.
Okay. That application will be postponed until next month because he hadn't got his notices in.
Does that require a vote, Mr. Chairman?
I do not think we need a vote.
Do we need to move to postpone?
No, I mean, you can't hear it because he didn't do notice.
Got it.
Item number twelve, special use case number 2025 dash zero-three, to allow three shipping containers to serve as storage modules in a seat-four zoning district at one-ten North Redwood Street. Is the applicant here?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward.
Kevin Haney, I'm with Haney Contractors.
Ed, would you like to make any other comments?
Well, I mean, what we've asked for is pretty much what we're, you know, asking to be allowed.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Please come forward and give us your name, please.
Good evening, I'm Carolyn Webb.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Webb, tell us what you're for or against this application?
I am vehemently against it.
Okay, give us your reasons.
We have rental property that's adjacent that we've been renting for forty-three-plus years. I've got pictures here just so you guys can see what they're talking about, of how neat and clean everything is. And then these are the pictures of the stuff that's on the property, of the house. Our rental property, the storage container that he brought in, the first one, she has three big picture windows, her living room, her kitchen, and her bedroom. She stands there at her kitchen and washes her dishes. This storage container is so high, it is blocking all three of her picture windows. And when, and it was just one at first when he was told that it was not legal. When we came back, there's three of them now. There's no light coming into her house at all. And you can see the pictures of how close it is and how high it is.
Okay.
And we've had many businesses there. We've all lived in harmony for years, like I said, forty-three-plus years.
Okay.
And he moved in, he bought the property, and within two weeks of moving in, this is when all of this stuff started being moved in.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Webb. Staff, in their summary, at the bottom paragraph, has concerns with the current proposal. Containers did not meet the minimums for placement on the site with regard to location and typical setbacks.
Could I see the photographs?
Just one second, please. This is the property as is, and here is the containers. C four would not even allow outside stores there, would it, on this site?
The shipping containers, if our container, if they're going to be on the site for more than sixty days, it requires approval of a special use. But the ordinance typically only addresses one container and not multiple containers.
What about the stacked construction material around it?
That typically is not allowed within, it should be enclosed.
Okay. Okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
Well, only thing I would like to do is see the photographs because I think that they might be at a time when we were loading some materials or different things into the, we have all intentions of keeping the site nice and clean, and I would be happy to move the container to the other side, or, but it is a vital part of our, you know, construction services. They're not always going to be in the same location, as you know, shipping containers are used on construction sites. as building goes on. So, we're just asking for permission to keep them there intermittently as they're needed and used, and that's all. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to, like I was saying, you know, we're if it's truly blocking all the light or whatever, we could move it to the other side or scoot it out, or more than happy to work with our neighbors in any way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chambers?
Yes, question for staff. As I read the write-up, there's a conflict between the office use and its required parking and the amount of space take, that, the amount of space for required parking and the, and the space taken up by the storage containers does not allow for the amount of required parking for the, for the function as an office?
There is that potential. Because the, the parking lot is not lined and striped, and so it's difficult to tell whether there is adequate parking. But just based on the cursory review, it, it appears that the containers are taking up a portion of the required parking.
That, and also if we move the containers to the other side of the lot, that could potentially encroach on the site distance to the, to the intersection.
That is a possibility. It would have to be out of the, the site triangle. So it'd have to be twenty-five feet back on each, from each corner.
I just want to clarify something, though. That is not an office.
It is functioning as a, what is its function?
That is just like a big open storage unit. It's a
The site's functioning as storage?
No, the building itself is just a warehouse. It's just a three thousand square foot, wide-open warehouse.
So this is going to be a warehouse for the building, and the extra lot or the excess property there would be for more storage for these containers?
Yes, sir. We bought the property as a warehouse for our construction company. We've been, our office was at one fifteen North Broadway. So, we've been in North Little Rock for a long time, so we when we purchased the property, the real estate sign said that it was a commercial building, could be used for construction companies, automotive, says it could have a car lot on it. So, we honestly bought it under the thought that we would have our warehouse there and a construction yard. We were hoping to put a fence up like, and if you drive around that area, you'll notice that there are many looks like construction companies of similar nature, nature that have fenced yards, and they use those facilities. Just, it's right down the road from ABC Supply. It's right down the road from a large fencing company, which their yards are fenced, and they come in and out with heavy equipment and different things. We, that was our intention. We certainly did not intend to upset anyone and did not think we were doing anything wrong, considering it's C-four commercial. And I guess we were thinking that if you can, you know, have a automotive dealership there, used car dealership there, that it would not be an issue to have shipping containers there. Because we do take them in and out of, as our construction projects need, so that was the thought.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Haney.
Based on what was just being told to us now is the use of the building as a warehouse is illegal, so it's not zoned correctly for that, so we'll react on that tomorrow and we'll deal with that part tomorrow. But the property is not zoned correctly to have a contractor's office with outdoor storage. Or, or a warehouse, or
It's not a contractor's office.
Okay, but it's not zoned either for a warehouse. We were trying to look up other things that might be able to work there, but a contractor's office wouldn't work either, so a warehouse is not an acceptable use in commercial zones. So
So what would you use that facility for? I mean, that's what it's been.
Anything that's allowed in C-four, but a warehouse is, is not.
So obviously, we may be faced with selling the property, and I understand that, but we had no idea.
So the
I mean, it's an open space with a garage door. What, what else?
We understand, Ms. Haney, but there's other uses that a C-four property can be used for. So if you can get with staff, they can show you a chart of the legal things that it can be used for, but what you're trying to use it for now is not legal, and it's not zoned for that.
But their request before you is they're wanting to do three, three storage containers. So, you're welcome to
I'm sorry, too. There, I just want to make sure that we're clear on there's two addresses on that property. Just want to make sure that we have, because the gentleman that was using it before, Larry Carpenter, it was a warehouse for a construction company. It's the same thing we're using it for.
He never got a business license then and never went, went through it the legal way, if that's, if that's what he was telling you. I mean, I don't know. We haven't looked it up. But it's zoned, it's zoned commercials, it's, you know, there's the zoning map up there. The whole property's zoned the same.
Well, there's two physical addresses for the property.
Which has nothing to do with zoning, so it's the whole property is zoned the same. So, but a warehouse is not a permitted use on it, and
So, you're saying that we can't keep leftover
I'm
building material that we use on other construction projects, or whatever it may be, in the three thousand square foot, which it has nothing but a bathroom and a heating and air system? So
I'm telling, what, you're not going to be able to get a business license to store materials there?
When we called, what, what, I'm sorry, though, what do we need a business license for?
To operate inside the city of North Little Rock.
But what are we operating? A warehouse? It's a storage unit.
Mr. Haney?
Yes, sir. Sure. No, and I'm not trying to win. I'm trying to understand, that's all. So apologize.
And there's no way that we can explain all the things to you today.
Yes, sir.
It can go in a C-four zone.
Sure.
And if you'll get with staff, they can provide you with a list of what will go in
Yes, sir.
C-four zone without any kind of special use or anything else.
Do you not need to postpone this?
And you're very welcome to postpone it where you can see what all you can do, but if you're today wanting to do the three containers, you're not legally zoned for that.
Yes, I, it's apparent. I just don't understand what's going on because, I mean, we, we didn't change the use. Our business is not there, and we're not selling anything out of it.
We understand all that.
Yes, sir.
So, you need to clarify what you can do. If you want to postpone it, you can postpone it until next month and come back and try it.
Yes, I do.
For something else. Or you can go ahead with a vote today.
No, I would appreciate it if we could postpone it because obviously I'm being blindsided, and I don't even know.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of postponing until next month?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry.
Hold on just a minute. Mr. White?
So right now, are the containers on the, on the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So he's got to remove those, right?
At, at the moment, he's in the process of applying for special use, and if it gets postponed for another month, it's allowed to be there until the Planning Commission and City Council votes yes or no.
Okay, just want to be clear on that. And as far as the warehouse is being used illegally, if he wanted to use this as a warehouse, then he could come in and ask for a special use or a conditional use on that?
Or a rezoning, or, yeah, there's a process to go through it, but until just now, we did not know there was not a business license or it was being operated as warehouse.
Yeah, and I guess my point to you is, I would postpone it, find out what you got to do to get it legal, and then come back in thirty days, and then we'll decide whether to do it.
No, I'm all for that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, I think maybe what your intent, is what I'm thinking your intent is, is to let him postpone for that, but not postpone for the containers today. Is that right?
I think he ought to postpone for everything today because I'm not voting for the containers.
Well, if he postpones today, then the containers can sit there until next month. Is that
Until there's a vote by City Council, yes.
Whatever.
But would you consider moving the one that's closest to the lady's house?
Sure. I, I'm, like I said, I'm not trying to be defiant at all.
Yeah. So, so I think
How far away would you like me to move it?
Okay. Mr. Webb, yes, sir, you can come forward. Give us your name for the record.
Yes, sir.
I'm E.J. Webb. And the, the containers, you, you, they can't be moved in and out. They can't be moved in and out. They're permanent. And another thing about those containers that you don't see in the pictures, it's a construction company. Every three or four o'clock in the morning, they're waking up, this lady that live there, loading and unloading, getting ready for the next yard. And what you don't see in those pictures, in the, where the blocks are stacked behind the building, if you look across in the other picture, you see some old houses, where little kids, and what they're doing, we have a, we have fifty, about a hundred and fifty slot. The house is sitting on it. You have forty feet, what they, they're trying to use forty, a forty of forty to park these containers and then have room to park these big box trucks. And turn around, it's not big enough for what they're trying to do. It's a neighborhood. We have people that live there. Leave those things there another month. That lady's in misery for almost two months with these things.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you all.
I believe that if we allow him to postpone this, yes, sir, I'll get waiting just a minute.
Yes, sir.
We allow him to postpone it. Hold on just a second.
Oh, okay.
Hold on just one second.
All right.
We allow him to postpone this, then that prolongs the vote on these containers, and if he is wanting to see what he can legally put in his C-four, he needs to do that and come back with a different application. Is that correct? Right, that's
Chairman, let me ask the staff something. Do these, these containers, when they're located on the site, do they have to follow requirements of building setback? Okay, okay.
In this case, you know
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. But I was talking about the setback because it looks like the two forty-foot containers there on, that butt into Washington Avenue are basically on the property line, which, and I would think, what? What is the building setback in that location? What I thought, yeah. Well, I mean, you can, we can go ahead and vote on the, the containers now, but I'm not going to vote for it unless I see a plan of how these things are actually going to be set on the site or the area they're going to be set on. I know he said they're going to be moved to different areas, but we need to give him a zone, or define the zone of where in that site he can locate those. You know, we need something other graphic than this.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Louis Dillard. I represent the East Arjenna Neighborhood Association. We've been working with the city to try and keep, get the neighborhood back up to a neighborhood. And the last thing we need is construction companies taking over the neighborhood, you know, I mean. We're welcome to developers building houses, you know, affordable housing, but construction company, no.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Louis. Okay, Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, I just, I just, postpone it and then address it as a clean application next time as opposed to, we took this vote, and you said that, and now you're saying this, so
I agree with that.
Let's just keep it nice and clean, and postpone it, and review it again. They've dealt with, the neighbor has, has put up with the, the containers there for several months. They can, they can take another thirty days, and I know it's tough, but we'll deal with it.
Well, I understand our applicant wants to do exactly that, so
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Will this need to come before the, the Design Review Committee? Before it comes back to the planning?
Uh, yes, it probably will be if he is wanting to go before
The, for the storage containers, we can do that, Vandy. That, that would work out.
Okay. Well, I, I just wondered because then it could have buffering and spacing and all that if it goes back to Dawn. I just wanted to be sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. White?
All right, so here, here's the concern, so we don't waste your time.
Yes, sir.
Is, is the containers, I'm never going to vote for them. Just, I tell you, whether we wait thirty days or sixty days or whatever, I just can't vote for them because of, of what the resident said. And I think the majority of this, this group is not going to vote for that. As far as the house and stuff, that's a whole different thing. I'm open-minded on that, but the containers, I, I would never be able to vote for that. Sorry for that, but I don't want to waste your time for thirty more days and also the expense of you doing all this stuff.
Sure.
So, anyway, I just want to be upfront with you.
Mr. Chairman, I think also
Mr. Foster?
We don't have an ordinance here that's compatible, or this is compatible, because I think what I understand is the ordinance only deals with one container. And here we are, voting on a three-container application.
Normally, the ordinance would allow one container for sixty days, and that's why they're, again, we're doing the special use, so they're, they're wanting to ask for three.
Okay.
I mean, it could be five, it could be one, so, but it's, they're, in this case, they're asking for three and at these locations on, that's shown on that drawing.
Yes, there's two of the green and then the one. They're all on the application.
Mr. Spencer, if this were to be voted on today on the containers and were to be disallowed or allowed, if it were disallowed, would he have to wait a year to come back to try to see what he can do with his storage building, or with his warehouse?
It, that, that would come into effect at City Council, so it has to be turned down, so you guys would be giving a positive or negative recommendation.
Right.
And then, once there's a yes or no vote, then that year kicks in, which would be from City Council.
But that would be for the containers themselves, not for the building that
Correct.
that he has wanted to use as a warehouse.
That's correct.
So if we vote now and turn the containers down, then he can come back with his storage building, C-four, with a proposal of what you want to do with it.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So
Can I postpone?
I got it. Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna bag up to the to the concept of I'm struggling a little bit with postponing when we know in thirty days, there's not much can change for these containers. The container concept is what's on the table for the conversation. What is it that he can do in thirty days and come back convince us that it's going to be okay to put one, two, or three containers on that property? I don't know that that's going to happen.
Right.
I'm just trying to keep it clean. Vote on something that's nice and clean and easy and not have overlapping approvals and things like this that we have to deal with. So, this is my sample.
I'm agree.
We've got a motion on the floor to postpone. We need to vote on that first.
We don't have a second?
Have a second?
No second.
They failed without a second.
Okay. There's not a motion on the floor.
I'll call for the question.
Call for the question. On the application as submitted
Mr. Chairman?
Leaving the three containers there. Mr. Chambers?
The applicant, did you request to postpone, or do you want us to go on and vote?
Yes.
He did.
I did request to postpone, yes.
But we do not have to accept that. Is that correct?
Oh, okay.
Ms. Marie?
No, you do, do not have to accept.
We can go ahead and vote, even though the applicant has asked for a postponement. And we've discussed what the postponement is going to entail. So
Questions have been called.
Questions have been called. Please call the roll. On the application as it's submitted.
Banks?
No.
Glasgow?
No.
Chambers?
I disagree with the process, but no.
Foster? Chairman Clifton?
No. Ms. Haney, your application did fail about keeping your storage containers on this property, so they'll have to be moved.
Yes, sir.
You, you do have a C four zone piece of property, if you'll come with the city staff, they can advise you on what you can do with the C four property, or the possibility of using your property as you want. It's my understanding a C four warehouse will work, but with no outside storage, is that correct?
No, it, uh, warehouse or contractor's, uh, office with outdoor storage both require conditional use in the C four zoning.
But without outside storage?
With, without outside storage in, for the contractor's office.
But without any outside storage, just the office itself?
I just want to, it's not my office, but I'm sorry, I'm just trying to clear that up.
But it's contracting material that you're storing, and we're, we're not pulling the difference out, it's, it's construction materials.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Haney.
All right, I would like to point out one thing, though, and, and I'm, have no problem with, obviously, we're going to move the containers, I'm not going to be defiant, but I would like to say, so the three o'clock in the morning events was actually, we were being burglarized, so I just want to make sure that, and I apologize for that, for that waking your tenant up, but that was actually, um, we were being robbed, it's happened on three occasions at this point, so just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Haney.
So I want to make sure, this is a, a negative recommendation from the planning commission, so you still have a chance to go to city council in front of the mayor and elected officials, and, and ask for their final, for a vote from them, and if you want to do that, get back with us, and we'll tell you how to do that process, but, but that, that is, that is, would be the next step, if you wanted to take it, is you would go in front of them with a negative rec, recommendation, so that's still out there for you, so just let us know what you want to do.
I appreciate you letting me know. I mean, those things that we've got to do to secure the location, but other than that, I, I, I'll have to, so who would I contact?
You, one of us in the morning, yeah.
Contact you tomorrow?
Yeah.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize.
Number thirteen, special use case number twenty twenty-five dash zero four, a special use to allow outdoor storage of boats, vehicles, campers, and RV in a C three zoning district at forty-six oh nine Count Robinson Road. Is the applicant here? Is the applicant here for forty-six oh nine Count Robinson Road?
No, no.
I'm ninety-nine point nine percent sure he did not do notice, but, um, I will get in touch with him tomorrow and clarify that.
So we want to postpone this until next month?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, public comment, anyone? Move to, move to adjourn. Motion made, and secondly, we adjourn, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.